Dr. Moriarty.
Here.
Mrs. Roberts.
Here.
Mrs. Powers.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Pritchett.
Here.
Okay, we'll start off the meeting with board information share. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Um, not yet, but I will. So I'm working on something that does the FTE estimates for both the Florida empowerment scholarships and our traditional and charter schools for the last three years, which I'll share at the next meeting. So you can have that if you need to explain that to someone, the estimate, and then what the actual is. Okay? Thanks.
Anyone else? Moving on, we will now have Dr. Greg Laws give us a school grades presentation. Thank you, Dr. Laws.
A public comment.
Oh. Just one second. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, Dr. Laws, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, school board members. Superintendent Miss Main, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening to share school grade calculation information with you and hopefully provide some clarification on some points. First piece being is the raw data versus accountability measure data. A lot of times when we're looking at school grade data, we have to understand that it is placed upon the accountability measures in regards to who counts for school grades. Essentially, students that are in survey two and survey three match for the school and/or the district count in the school grade components and the accountability measures. This is the most important, and this is where we make our informed decisions from looking at the accountability measures and the school grade data. This next piece is just a general overview of the school and district grading system. Achievement, learning gains, middle school acceleration, high school graduation rate, high school career and acceleration provide the foundation for overall district grade. I'll go into more detail as we progress through the sides. I just wanted to give you an overview as to what we're looking at. First up is the elementary school grades model. Has eight components, four components in ELA, three in math, and one in science. A further breakdown by component includes ELA in math achievement in grades three and five, three through five, ELA in math learning gains, grades four through five, ELA in math learning gains of the lowest quartile, grades four through five. A special note, ELA for grade three has a separate achievement component, therefore it essentially counts twice. And science achievement in grade five. Additionally, I've provided an example of the percentage points for all components combining for a sixty-one point five, which rounds to sixty-two, which essentially is the percentage necessary to earn an A for elementary schools. In each component, there must be at least ten students tested in order to be counted. The middle school grades model contains nine components, three components in ELA, three in math, one in science, one in social studies, and one in middle school acceleration. The further breakdown includes ELA in math, which math includes algebra and geometry at the middle school level, achievement in grades six through eight, ELA in math, including algebra and geometry as well, learning gains, six through eight, and ELA in math, including algebra one and geometry, learning gains of the lowest quartile, and six through eight. Science, and I've added including biology here, achievement in grade eight, social studies achievement in grade eight for civics, and middle school acceleration, which includes EOC achievement and industry certifications. Also, I've added the percentages there for each component, combining for sixty-three point five, which rounds to sixty-four, which essentially is what middle schools need to earn an A. Again, ten students in each component must be tested in order for it to be counted. High school grades model. Has ten components, three in ELA, three in math, one in science, one in social studies, one in college and career acceleration, and one in graduation rate. The breakdown includes ELA achievement in grades nine through ten, ELA learning gains nine through ten, ELA learning gains of the lowest quartile in grades nine and ten, math, which consists of algebra and geometry achievement, math, algebra and geometry learning gains, and math, algebra and geometry learning gains of the lowest quartile, science, which is biology achievement, and social studies, which is US history achievement. There's two additional components at the high schools. Both are lagging, meaning they are from the previous year's cohort. So for example, twenty-three, twenty-four cohort data is the metric used to derive the components for the twenty-four, twenty-five school grade. Those are college and career acceleration, which includes advanced placement, Cambridge ACE, international baccalaureate, dual enrollment, industry certifications, and clock hour dual enrollment, and the ASVAB test. Also, the last piece there is the four-year graduation rate, which also is lagging. Provide an example of the percentage of points combining for sixty-four point five, which rounds to sixty-five, which is what is needed to earn an A for high schools this year. Again, ten students have to be tested in each component. And to the district grades model, there are twelve components that include all the different components from the elementary, middle, and high school. As you take a look, you'll notice that third grade achievement from elementary is there, which is doubled. Middle school acceleration is there, and from the high schools, college and career acceleration, along with graduation rate are there, in addition to the achievement and learning gains from ELA and math. In the example provided, I included our current district grade components, even on the new grading scale, which I'll go into a little bit more deeper as we get through these slides. DOE has enacted this year that we will still be an A if everything stays the same. So we're at sixty-five percent, and that is what will be needed moving forward to earn an A for the district. As our esteemed superintendent has reiterated frequently, we are unstoppable, and those scores will continue to rise. Areas of focus. Taking a look, I've mentioned the third grade ELA achievement, which counts twice, which you can see how important that is. We would obviously need to focus on that. Additionally, we need to continually raise the bar on ELA achievement across the board for all grades four through ten. Also, grades five and eight, science will be targeted for growth. Special note, this year, most middle schools will be offering one section of biology honors, which will support the middle school acceleration and their overall science achievement. Our comprehensive high schools have implemented courses and pathways to ensure we continually increase our college and career acceleration percentages, which is a huge piece when it comes to the high school school grade. In order to earn a letter grade, schools must test ninety-five percent of their students, and those that count for participation are there for survey three and also the first day of the window that opens May first this year. Looking at achievement, a lot of times, we have to ensure that we know the students that belong to each one of these categories. So obviously, survey two and three, students who scored a level three or higher in ELA math, science, and social studies. Students taking what was, used to be referred to as the FSAA, the Florida Standards Alternate Assessment, is now called the Florida Alternate Assessment. Those students are also included in school and district achievement percentages. Additionally, ELL students are included in the achievement components after they have been enrolled in school for two years based upon their due date, which is the date entered United States school. My apologies for the copious amount of text on this slide. However, when looking at learning gains and the learning gains of the lowest quartile, they're the two most challenging components to discern and determine how they're calculated. For time's sake, I'll give you a quick version. Learning gains is based upon year-to-year growth in ELA and math. Learning gains of the lowest quartile is based upon students included in the learning gains denominator for ELA and math. The students in the lowest quartile are determined by a ranking system, whereas the students who rank twenty-five point five percent or lower, based upon their test scores, are considered to be in the lowest quartile. This ranking is done for each ELA and math assessment by grade level. Then the DOE combines those for an overall lowest quartile for each related subject. That's pretty complicated, so I put up a graphic here for you guys. Hopefully, you can see my highlighting. The first piece is, there are a few options to earn a learning gain. The first one is increase at least one achievement level. Hopefully, you can see where I've highlighted the yellow, where a student in grade three scored level two last year, and this year they need to score a level three in grade four. Second option is maintain a level one or two and move from one lower subcategory to a higher subcategory with the same achievement level. This is the green highlight, where a grade five student scored a low level one last year, and then they must score a mid-level one this year in grade six. The third option is maintain a level three or four and increase the scale score by at least one point. This is the blue highlight, where a seventh grade student scored a level three, for example, a two thirty-seven last year, and this year they must score a level three also, which they have to go up one point, which would be a two thirty-eight in grade eight. The final option is maintain a level five. This option is highlighted in purple, where a grade nine student scored a level five last year, and this year they must score a level five in grade ten as well. Math is very similar to ELA. There is one lone difference, where students going from fast math to algebra one EOC, or the algebra one EOC to the geometry EOC, students need to maintain a level three, four, or five, in addition to the other criteria mentioned. Middle school acceleration. The key to middle school acceleration is scheduling all eighth graders who earned a level three on the seventh grade math assessment in algebra one. Additionally, any students who earn a level three or higher on a high school ERC included. This is important piece where adding the biology one will play a role in this component. Consequently, students only count once, so if they earn a level three in algebra and biology one, they only count for one point. Also, we currently do not have any high school industry certifications being offered at the middles. High school graduation. The four-year graduation rate includes all students have met graduation requirements, including passing the graduation assessments in ELA and math. This component, as mentioned before, lags by one year, so the twenty-five, twenty-six school and district grade graduation rate component will utilize the graduation cohort from twenty-four, twenty-five. For the graduation assessments, students must pass the grade ten ELA assessment or the, and the algebra one assessment by earning a level three or higher. However, students can meet this graduation assessment requirement by earning a concordant or comparative score in one of the following tests: SAT, PSAT, NMSQT, PSAT, TEN, ACT, pre-ACT, CLT, CLT-10, and the geometry EOC. Some of these were just recently added by the state board. The PSA-10, the pre-ACT, and the CLT-10 were just recently added as concordant and comparative scores. High school and college and career acceleration. This includes all students who have graduated with the necessary requirements during their Florida high school career, have earned one of the items listed. I'm not going to read those to you, but it's pretty self-explanatory in regards to what they need to do in order to earn a college and career acceleration point. Again, this lags by one year. So summary of graduation rate, the twenty-five, twenty-six school and district grade for the high school, college, and career acceleration component will utilize the cohort from twenty-four, twenty-five. As I mentioned before, DOE has updated the grading scales for high schools and districts. They don't like us standing on our laurels, so they have moved up the grading scales accordingly. The school, the state board rule says if seventy-five percent of more schools with a particular school type earn an A or B, then grading scales will be adjusted to our percentage. Eighty-two percent of high schools in Florida earned an A or B this, this year, and high schools and districts, because districts go along with the high schools, will need to earn a sixty-five percent rating for an A. And this is just a breakdown so you can see how it works. Elementary and middle school will stay the same, but the high schools and the district will be raised from sixty-four to sixty-five, as you see there, for, to earn an A. Again, we're taking collective responsibility to ensure our scores continue to raise, increase based upon the strategic focus and the necessary work being implemented to support all of our students towards success. We are very fortunate here in Martin County to have amazing students, in addition to an amazing staff that puts all these pieces together for our rating. And now that we have maintained, earned the A back, it will be a challenge to maintain the A. They say it's a lot easier to get the A back versus maintaining it, but I know we have the right folks in the right positions, and we got amazing kids that will continue this process. The last slide is just some resources that I put here for you. The first piece is the guide on calculating school and district grades. DOE puts this out when they put out the school grades. They do this every year, in case anything changes. They want to make sure it's correct. So that is there for you. In addition, parents always have a lot of questions when it comes to school grades and the scores, so I have some additional links for parents in regards to how their child's scores work and how the fast and best assessments are administered. Hopefully, that was succinct and brief and clarifying, and please let me know if there's any questions and if there's anything else I can do to help.
Powers?
Yes, thank you very much. I am curious, did I hear you say we don't have any middle school industry certifications?
That's correct.
Do we know, I mean, why, why wouldn't we? Are we going to think about adding something as, since we're trying to brand our middle schools? Like, is there an industry certification that is age-appropriate for them to take in middle school? I'm just thinking about the points.
Right.
And then I'm just curious about the bottom twenty-five percent.
Yes, ma'am.
So do we know how many students are in the bottom twenty-five percent in third grade? How many get to a three or higher and maintain it? Like, how, how are we tracking our success, moving them? Not, not just the points, but do they get by the tenth grade, are, do they get to a level three? Or how are we tracking their success?
So what we do is, every year, we share with the schools the potential students who will be in their lowest quartile. So they know at the beginning of the year what group of students that would be. And usually, we say twenty-five percent, but it's usually about thirty percent of students that we take a look at, so we don't miss the bar. And in addition to that, so they know exactly what they need to do in order to make a learning gain. As they matriculate and get to high school from elementary, you know, in third grade they need to get a level two, whereas in high school, they need to get a level three. So the bar is raised, but we do have additional components and support mechanisms to ensure a lot of students that do not pass the tenth grade ELA. Those are all those other additional pieces that we work toward in regards to that concordant and comparative score to get them across the stage. And the majority of our students that do graduate, obviously, are within that realm of, of making that grade, whether it be on the ELA tenth grade in algebra one and/or on the comparative comparative score. Does that answer your question?
And just to be fair, not every child that doesn't pass the tenth grade ELA is not necessarily in the bottom twenty-five percent.
No, that's correct.
So there's that, but, yeah, it would just be, I would just be nice to see how we're tracking, but, and I know students change every year, but if they're in the bottom twenty-five percent in third grade, I'd like to know how, how are they finishing high school? Like, where are they finishing? How have they grown over the years? Are we just seeing incremental growth? Are we actually seeing them, at what point do the majority of students reach grade level? Is it, you know, in ninth grade or tenth grade? Or where, where is that change, the bulk of the change happening? Because I think it would also help us identify where the resources are needed. So if we're seeing the most impact between third and fifth grade, then we would know to target those areas to really beef it up, and then they continue on the track? Or are there dips? Are there ups and downs? Like, kind of what that looks like? I don't know. I know that's a lot of data and data analytics, but it would be really great if we kind of knew what was happening.
So we, we know in, in third grade, they have to get a level two, which doesn't mean that they're a proficient reader at that point. So those students are still struggling, struggling, and we provide remediation across the way. Essentially, it doesn't actually manifest itself until they get to high school, because that's the stopgap. Well, they graduate without passing those tests, and so that is the key when, when we're talking about when you see that number jump. And so I would say it's, it's pretty straightforward across the board, and once they get to that high school, when they have to get that level three in order to pass and/or meet a comparative or concordant score, I think that is where we see the most jump.
Yeah, I'm just curious about, like, okay, the kids that are level one or two, what if they did have, what if they did jump in fifth grade? Like, what does that mean? Like, I just kind of like to see their progression.
Right.
To see where they're going up, when they're going down, and then how are they getting to a level three for graduation?
Right.
Because if we're seeing dips in, you know, because it should look like this. I mean, all things perfect.
That would be nice, yes, absolutely.
All things perfect, it would look like that.
Right.
But I'm just curious how, what it looks like. Just because I love data and I love to see that, and if there are things that we can identify from it to, to put resources toward, I think that would be good to know.
Yeah, absolutely, I completely agree. The, the deal is that the state gives us two stopgaps, third grade and tenth grade, and unfortunately, that's where we see the, the largest growth. And so I agree with you, it can't just be in those two grade levels. It's got to be elsewhere in order to be impactful. So I completely agree.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Laws. We really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to Mr. George with social media litigation. Everyone had a chance to look at the questions that were asked and answered, and does anyone have any questions for Mr. George about it? And whether or not we should pursue or not?
Can I make a motion?
Of course.
No, this is, this is a workshop. We can't make questions at workshops.
No, we're just going to discuss it, so discuss.
Discuss, okay. I would like to reaffirm my point, that I think that this is a good idea. I appreciate Mr. George and his thoughtful answers, which just reaffirms why I think that we should be a part of this, and I just wanted to express my support for that. Thanks.
Anyone else?
No, when it comes to the board for a vote, I'd like to see kind of what we would plan to do. What would our initiatives be as a board on spending? Oh, did, I must have missed that one. Did you? Is it in the packet? Sorry, I missed that one.
Yeah, it's in the packet under a, a thing that says, "Plan for allocation of funds should Martin County School District join social media harm litigation," and the very last page has an estimated low and high end budget.
Oh, here we go. That's in the second attachment. Okay, thank you.
So I, I guess my, my question is, do we want to bring this to a regular board meeting to vote on? Or do we want to not? I think that's what, what today was about. Go ahead, Ms. Russell.
I would say yes.
Okay. All right, then Diane, let's put this on the August regular meeting for a vote, because I believe September would be too late, because I think we have to join by September, so we'll put it on for a vote at that time. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey, Mr. Seacrest, we have a pool update.
So good afternoon, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Maine, Mark Seacrest, Director of Facilities and Planning. So before I jump into the pool discussion, I have some other exciting news, because we've been tracking other projects side by side with the pool. So as of today, Stewart Middle School Cafeteria Building is now fully open for use. We got the certificate of occupancy from the building officials, so everybody can move into that building now. And if you haven't been there, the old building's gone, new grass has been planted, irrigation is in place. All the existing buildings have been painted to match the existing campus, so it's, it's exciting right now at that campus, and basically, all the staff are moving into that cafeteria building right now. So next, I will move to the pool update. Since our last regular scheduled board meeting, as of seven twenty-five, which is July twenty-fifth, all of the items under the option one were completed. The only item that was still outstanding at that date was an additional item where we, where it was approved to replace the filters. Those filters were in process, they were being made and shipped to the school. On seven twenty-nine, we actually had our first health department inspection, since everything was completed on the twenty-fifth. The health department came up with five items that we could not open the pool until those items were addressed, and they were re-inspected. Now, keep in mind, there is a grocery list of items that they put on their inspection report that we have to address after the fact, but it doesn't prevent the pool from opening. And those items are in addition to whatever our assessment report showed, so they're additional items that we had no idea about. So as of today, we had the re-inspection with the health department. They approved four items out of five. Right now, there's a clarity issue with the pool water. So currently, we are addressing that, but it was a perfect time, because right now, as of one o'clock, the new filter system wasn't installed, so the pool had to be drained down after the health inspection, and then had to be refilled. So it's being refilled right now, and it's going to be tested and balanced over the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours, with a goal of having it re-inspected between probably Thursday or Friday of this week. And the health department's on call, and they said they would come whenever we are ready. So they're basically waiting for us to get that water at the, at the critical point where it's test and balance. As it was previously As it was previously planned, the opening day of the pool was going to be the first day of school. So it was 8:11, 25. So we're still in that range, as long as the health department doesn't surprise us with this last final inspection. But I will take any questions if anybody has any.
So basically, up until then, the swim teams can go to selfish splash and still practice for swim season, which is coming up. And then hopefully, it would then open that first week of school or close to that.
Yes, and while we were told by the swim team that they were planning on using it after 8:11.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, the next item is the superintendent's evaluation tool. I'm going to open it up for discussion.
Ms. Powers?
I just had a couple of things. One is, I want to be clear on how we're all evaluating, because the last tool was, I felt like it was like you could give a one, two, or three. So I didn't give like a 2.5 or 2.8. So we just need to have common, like, what can we give? What do we want to give? A 3.0, a 2.5, and a 2.0? Like, that type of range? Or are we going to go anywhere between, you know, zero to nine? So that we're all doing it consistently? How? And I do think two and a half, the indicator below a two and a half, I think a two and a half is really good. I think a two, which is effective. I think it should be a two, where it says two and a half.
So you're looking at the scoring rubric? And you're saying that 2.1 to 2.5 shouldn't be effective? It should be higher?
No, I think a 3.0 to, you know, I would say like to a 2.5 is highly effective.
So if you go down on the page.
Right, I'm looking at that.
The scoring rubric, a 2.6 to a 3.0 is highly effective?
Yes.
A 2.1 to 2.5 is effective? Are you saying those should be changed?
Well, I think it should be a half point range, not a four point.
So I see what you're saying. So make 2.5 to 3.0 highly effective?
Yes.
And make 2.0 to 2.4 effective?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to step, we would step it down to accommodate that. And then, in the actual scoring itself, you can put any decimal number you want between one and three.
Because that's not how it was on the, I just wanted us to all be consistent on how we do it.
Yes, so the understanding would be that anywhere in the realm of one to three as the scoring, you have the option to choose 2.7. Right. Does everyone agree with that?
I like whole numbers personally. It's zero to three, though, right? You said one to three.
I meant zero to three.
I'm a whole number person, too. Like, I think it's kind of like, how do you evaluate 2.8 or 2.9? Like, how, you know, it's really hard. I'm like, I don't know.
Well, I kind of look at it like 98 out of 100. It's an A. So a whole number, if there are two, they're just effective. But if they're almost a three, not quite, but very close, you have a little wiggle room. That's how I look at it. I don't, whole numbers are wonderful, but I think there's kind of nuances that have to be taken into consideration. That's just how I feel about it. But I'd like to hear what everyone else says.
Lee's got her thing up.
Oh, thank you. I think where it says rating scale, it should say scoring. So that's the rating scale for scoring. And I think it should be.
Lee, before we, I apologize, but.
I'm sorry.
We're talking about this whole number issue, so.
I am talking about the whole number issue.
Okay, okay. It sounded like you went above and.
Well, I can talk about the bottom part first, if you want to talk about the rubric first. But I can do it either way.
Okay.
In the rubric, I think that unsatisfactory should be 0 to 0.9. Needs improvement should be 1.0 to 1.9, so that the 1.0 matches the 1 in the area above it that says needs improvement in the rating scale. I think the effective should be 2.0 to 2.4, so that the 2.0 matches the 2 above it, where it says effective. And I think that highly effective should be 2.5 to 3. And that would be, so that scoring rubric would be what you would get when you add and divide your totals. You would end up in those, in that decimal area, like we did this time, where you ended up with a 2.7 or 2.8 or whatever the number was. I think in the area above it, which is the rating scale, which is the scoring piece, instead of trying to decide what the difference between a 2.3 and a 2.4 is, I think we should be using no decimals, only halves, so that we could say, if I think you're halfway between effective and highly effective, I can give you a 2.5. If I think you're halfway between needs improvement and effective, I can give you a 1.5. If I think you're not unsatisfactory, but you're not, it just needs improvement, I can give you a .5. So I would be adding three additional numbers I could be using in my numbers for the rubric. That's just what I think.
Okay. Dr. Moriarty?
And then the only other thing is with decimals. So like, let's say that he scored a 2.05.
No, it wouldn't, I don't think it could calculate to that if you're using 2.8 or 2.7.
You could get any number. But if it was a 2.05, it would be between categories, so.
Has that ever happened?
If you're saying we could put any number in there, it can certainly happen. Or just round it if we want to put that we're rounding the numbers.
I think it's, I still think, I think we should stay with whole numbers, honestly. I just can't imagine, like, and then we just change the highly effective, effective, needs improvement, unsatisfactory. Like, if you're below a one, obviously, you're unsatisfactory. If you're below a 1.9 to whatever it's to a one, your needs improvement in that way. Because, I don't know, I just think it's. I think the question came up when we were looking at, how do you say, like, I, because I did it all in whole numbers. But still, my average ended up being almost a three. So I think the point was that we want to give credit, because the majority of it was highly effective. And there were some areas that were effective. So I don't know how you measure with a .8. Like, okay, well, I'm going to give .8, because 80% of the time, it was good. But the 20% wasn't to be kind of, I don't know. Me. I like whole numbers. I think it's, or we go with just .5.
Any other comments?
I mean, I agree as far as changing the scoring rubric to keeping it just the way that Mrs. Powers and Roberts said, you know, zero to 0.9. And then you've got your ones basically being the one to 1.9. I agree with all of that. I'm kind of torn on the rating scale. I understand both sides of it. And honestly, I'm good with either. Her score working out to be even after the fact of just using whole numbers, her would get a 2.8. That's good. I mean, I can get behind that, if that's going to be easier for everyone. I just, for myself this time, I did use the 2.7 or the 2.8. That was because, you know, I felt like there's some things that weren't perfect, but they were so close. That's why I gave that 2.7 or that 2.8. I couldn't be 100% on that perfect score. So I felt like it gave me a little leeway doing it that way. But if it's going to be easier for everyone to do the other, that's fine with me as well.
No, I mean, if the majority wants to do it that way, that's fine. But will, the scoring rubric should be tweaked a little bit so that highly effective is 2.5 to 3.0. Does everybody agree with that? And then 2.0 to 2.4 is effective. And what is it? 1.0 to 1.9 is needs improvement? And then .0 to .9 is unsatisfactory? That work? Any other comments regarding the rest of it?
I think just that one in the evaluator guidance, and it talks about if you're rating someone a 2.5, because now that will be highly effective, I don't think that we need to make a comment. I mean, I made comments, whether it was highly, regardless of the score, I commented on every domain. But I don't think it should, just because it's a 2.5, which is highly effective, that you should mandate some sort of evidence that why you rated it not a three.
Gotcha. So I think we can comment as we feel is necessary. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't eliminate comments if we feel like we want to comment on something. Is that?
Well, I think that if you are going to rate needs improvement or unsatisfactory, then it's mandatory that you put a comment.
Correct. Okay. Right. Anyone else?
I was just going to make a comment, saying that if, I feel like it's a good idea for each board member to individually meet Superintendent Maine, regardless of the scores that are given, whether they're low or high, just to kind of give him feedback on what we're looking for and have that personal one-on-one with him. Or we can kind of tell him how we feel, or things we'd like to see.
I absolutely agree with that. Every board member should meet individually before we speak on it publicly, so there aren't any surprises. You know, I think it's good to keep the open dialogue. So I agree with that. Is there any other, Roberts?
So are we doing the decimals or the halves?
We're doing whole numbers for the rating scale. And the rubric is going to reflect 0 to .9 as unsatisfactory.
I was okay with the scoring rubric. I'm still advocating for the halves, because if he's more than effective, but hasn't quite reached the highly effective, and what that's going to push me to, it's going to push me down to a two instead of allowing me a 2.5. I can understand the not wanting to deal with a 2.7 as opposed to a 2.8 or 2.6 or that type of thing. But I think if you're halfway in between those two, and if you're not necessarily needing an improvement plan, but you just need a little bit more to be effective, I think that's like a 1.5. Otherwise, if I don't think you're quite effective in one measure, instead of giving you a two, my only choice then is to push you down to a needs improvement, which it might not be a needs improvement. I'm at the 1.5. So I just think that adding the halves helps, but whatever the board decides.
I'm fine with the half. I don't.
I could, I can support the half. Sure.
Yeah, I just think we need to be consistent.
So yes, whatever we do, it should be consistent. So we will incorporate halves into the equation, if that makes sense.
When I get a 2.05, I'm not calling you.
You can't. You can't have a 2.05. You'll be breaking the rules. It's a 2.5, a 3.5, a 1.5, .5.
I will calculate it. You'll see.
You got it?
I got it.
Any other comments about this? Okay, this can go on the.
Yes, if I could just say one thing, I appreciate all of the dialogue domains. Seven will be, is being worked on right now. So what you see on here is just a sample. I'll meet with each individual board member to go through what I'm personally going to work on. And then if there's anything you would like for me to work on, I'll put that into domain seven. You will see that for the final vote on the instrument.
And I want to thank Mr. Shazo for helping me with this. Well, she did the heavy lifting. I did a little bit of research to find a tool that I thought incorporated what everyone was asking about. And I also like the addition of getting points for our A-school rating and our district rating. I think it adds another component that reflects what is going on in the district. So I wanted to thank you, Jen. I appreciate it.
And Madam Chair, this is much better than what we had last year. So kudos to you and Mr. Shazo.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so that'll be on the August for approval, and then we'll forge ahead. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the dialogue. We're going to go on to school board policies, 6.01. This is suspension or dismissal of administrators. Do I have any comments from the board regarding this policy? So 6.02. Am I, do I have to? I can just keep going? Okay, I get so confused. 6.02, this is physical examination. Are there any comments from the board regarding this policy? Okay, 6.03, fitness for duty. Any comments about this one? No? 6.04, evaluation of administrative personnel. Ms. Roberts?
I would like a sentence added into that policy that says, unless written exemption is given by the superintendent, an employee can only receive an effective or highly effective designation with successful completion of all components of the published job description. I think that when we have employees that have 10 items on their job description that they're supposed to do, and they're doing six of them, seven of them, eight of them, or they're not doing one of the components on their job description, I think that by definition means that they are not effective. Effective means that you're covering all the components of your job description. So I can understand if the superintendent says, hey, I understand your workload, and I want to take number four off, and you don't need to be doing that right now. I want you to focus on these other things. I think the superintendent can do that. But I think in the meantime, we should be expecting our administrators to do their job description.
Powers?
So I don't disagree with that. But I do think that you can have, as, from an HR standpoint, you kind of need to cover a lot of areas that a person may not be doing consistently as part of their job. Because then if you, otherwise, they're going to be bringing back job descriptions, like, oh, my goodness, we have a need for this, so we better amend the job description and their evaluation and bring that back to the board to be approved. I just think when you encompass a lot of things, that's why you put other duties as assigned or whatever, that you're going to, you're, it's. I think that that should be up to the supervisor to determine if the person is doing their job or not, and doing all the components and fulfilling the expectations. I don't think that we should be putting that kind of limit on it, because something, we could get a tool that takes away a major component of someone's job. And so their supervisor may not evaluate them on that piece because we, that duty was taken away, or it was absorbed by another department, or we had a reorg, or whatever it is. Otherwise, they're going to be bringing job descriptions back and forth. I think that can be too onerous, and I think we should leave that to the administrator. Unless you convince me otherwise.
I would just like to weigh in a little bit. It's a good suggestion. I think history shows that evaluations can become complacent.
They've been there for 10 years. They're doing a good job. We'll let it slide. I mean, I've been in that situation. I think we all have. I think what the, the important piece is to make sure that we're fully and honestly evaluating employees in a thorough way and not letting things slide. So I would say, I think it's incumbent upon the evaluators to do a good job and not just run through the numbers, check, check, check the box and be done with it. So I like what you're saying. I just think we find another place to make sure that evaluations rise to, rise to what they're supposed to be. They're not checking the box. They are talking. They are relaying what can be better, what's, what's excellent. Instead of just running through and saying, okay, another year, another evaluation. So that's kind of where I am with it. But it takes into consideration exactly what you're saying, but in a different way. So maybe we can look at wording that brings forth that it is incumbent upon each evaluator to really dig their teeth in and do the best job possible when they evaluate. Thank you.
So I, I don't disagree with that. And I think for those of us that do evaluations, it's a gift to be able to really dig in and do a really good evaluation. It, and it takes practice. And I don't, I think that this is a good opportunity for professional development for our administrators. Because there are, you know, there are good ways to do evaluations and bad ways. Like what you were saying, it's just checking boxes. But, you know, I think that this, I think our administrators need to be trained on really how to do an evaluation. That includes improvement plans. Improvement plans are very onerous and a lot of work. But we a lot of times let things go until it's renewal time and we just non-renew someone instead of like really addressing the issue early on in a, in the contract year. So I, I agree with all of that. And I think it's an excellent opportunity when you do the evaluation to review the job description at the same time. So they're not just signing off on, that's what I do. They're not just signing off on their evaluation, but they're signing off on their job description and acknowledging. But that's a good time also for the administrator to have that back and forth conversation. You can say, well, I'm not really doing that. It's not part of my job or, you know, that type of thing. So I, I just, I just think we have to give, I don't want to get into the practice of amending job applications multiple times or job descriptions multiple times throughout the year.
Superintendent?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I appreciate all of that dialogue. I think it's all very valid and we are with you a hundred percent. We did take a lot of time in a breakout session during the leadership days to go through proper evaluations with Heather and her team, with every administrator, as well as our district office staff, because this has been an area of concern. I will tell you that I like the idea of the job description becoming a component of review during the evaluation, pre, mid, and post. Because I do believe that there are many times where the employee doesn't know what is even in their job description. So I do think we can make it part of our practice where, where the administrator is sitting to do the review with the employee, that they are actively reviewing the job description at the same time. That is also a great way for us to identify areas where a job description needs to be updated. Not that we want to bring them all forward, but to Mrs. Powers' point, there might be something that the employee tells us that we were unaware of. The job description hasn't been updated in a long time. And that is one that needs to go forward for review and change. So I think we can bridge both. And I think we can do it in a way where maybe we bring language. We can pull this right now. We can bring language back forward for the board to review that allows us to encompass that it has to be part of the process. Review of the job description has to be part of the process.
I just have one other question. Do, when, when are, when do you conduct the, is it anniversary date? When those reviews are conducted?
Yeah, they're, they're different for everybody. But if Director Platt can come forward to the microphone, because there's a set, there's, there's a schedule.
Hello, everyone. Heather Platt, Director of Professional Learning. So for school administrators, which is the policy that's up right now, they are, it's paced out throughout the year. So there are certain dates where their supervisor, now Ms. Gifford, will be meeting with them. So they have to submit a deliberate practice plan. That happens in September. That's the first review. They're required to do a midpoint review, which happens around January. And then they have a final review, which happens in May. And then there's another review once we get student growth scores back. So that's for school administrators. It's the same for teachers. And then for district staff, very similar. We are actually going to work to rewrite our district administrative evaluation system this year. We have worked on the teacher evaluation system as a result of statute and the school administrator. And now it's time for our district administrator. So as Superintendent Maine shared, we did a breakout session with them at Leadership Days. And we'll be coming back to you with review of what that will look like for your feedback. But we do have specific dates. And it's not necessarily based on the date of hire. Only if they were like a late hire, might they have a different timeline. But that's all articulated in our system documents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We should probably put that in the policy, I think.
Yeah. Put the, put the, the four, the four times of the year that it's being evaluated. Not the dates, but.
Right, like the, like September.
The timeline.
It doesn't have to be September 30th or the timeline. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
Appreciate it. Any other comments? No? Okay. Thank you for that. That was good dialogue. Okay, six point oh five, school improvement. Any comments on that policy? No? Okay. We are, program of instruction was pulled for the time being. So we're moving on to six point zero seven, physical education. Any comments about that policy? Six point zero eight, field and other school-sponsored trips. Ms. Roberts?
On page three, we're at the first green paragraph, full paragraph, where it says, the board shall approve those field trips and other school-sponsored trips, which take students more than 75 miles from the, this district. I think that should say, or, or plan to keep students out of the district overnight or longer, or out of the state. So that, because the way it's written right now, we would only approve a 75-mile trip away from the district if they were staying overnight. And then on the back page where it says, an instructional staff member shall not change a planned itinerary while the trip is in progress, except where the health, safety, or welfare of the students in his/her change is imperiled. I think it should have, the superintendent or designee shall be notified as soon as reasonably possible of the change.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can we just, the physical fitness piece? Are we going to, do we want to hold off on this one? Because they're adding the presidential physical fitness test back in to our.
Six point oh seven, you mean? Pull it back?
I don't know if we're going to have language that we need to add for that, but I would hate for us to go through the process and then have to bring it right back.
That, that makes sense.
Unless there's something.
Wasn't thinking of that.
We were just discussing that it's, it's going to happen, it's going to have to happen anyways. But we could, we could do either. We could approve this one as is. But if you're not that far along and it's a workshop and we're not approving it anyways, we certainly can wait for Neola to add the.
Okay. All right. Six point zero nine, educational options. Any discussion? Six point one zero, virtual instruction. Six point one one, hope scholarships. Six point one two has been pulled for the time being, tutoring for credit. Six point one three, career and technical education. Six point one four has been pulled for the time being, career and technical education work-based opportunities. Six point one five, physical examination of student athletes. This is being rescinded. Six point one six, dropout prevention and academic intervention programs. Six point one seven, exceptional student education. Six point one eight, selection of adoption of, selection and adoption of instructional materials. Six point one nine, evaluation of instructional personnel. Would that fall under the same type of conversation that we had previously? With the, with the. Okay, that's negotiated. So, okay. So we are finished with the policies. We are now open to the board. Do we have Ms. Russell?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everybody about a back-to-school event that Kiwanis is doing joint with YMCA of Indian Town. We, at YMCA of Indian Town on the 16th from 10 to 1, we have free food, face painting, all kinds of things. So we'd love everybody to come out.
Okay, what's the date again? The 16th?
Okay, 10 to 1.
10 to 1. Okay, you're all invited.
My husband will be cooking.
Who will?
My husband will be cooking.
Oh, cool. All the more reason to go.
Come on out.
Come on, Kevin. I'm sorry, Dr. Moriarty.
Yes, hi. Speaking of policies, I had brought up a policy change for these highly caffeinated drinks being on campus several months ago. I just wanted to know if there was any kind of an update on them? Because I have not seen that, any progress there. Maybe the superintendent or I'm not sure who I would follow up with that.
Okay, where, yes. So I believe Laura Hamadal Food Nutrition was reviewing those. They, they are in the hopper. So we have several policies that, that are in the hopper to kind of roll forward through the board. The last I had seen them, we had a couple of questions by, for Director Hamadal. After her presentation, she reviewed those. And so we will make sure that we roll those forward in the next, in the next round.
Great, thank you, Ms. Superintendent.
Also, are we bringing back the, our, we, we had a discussion on our committee appointments. Are we bringing that back to the full board? Or how, what are we doing on that?
So it's an interesting question because we're in the midst of committees right now. I was under the impression that the discussion would take place when the new committee appointments are ready to be delivered out. If we want to speak about it sooner, we can absolutely do that.
Well, I thought we had talked about shifting from a November start to like a, like a school year kind of.
School year start?
Start, so that, especially for issues like, you know, there's a lot of issues that just naturally follow the school year, like the Head Start Council, you know, getting someone new for that. And then the district.
Advisory committee.
Advisory committee. Insurance committee. Once we start negotiations, there will be a lot of talk around that. And so there's things that naturally follow the school year that I think we should, we should consider sooner rather than later.
So it, it's very valid. I'm just thinking in terms of, are there any committees right now that would need to be starting with someone else? That's the part that I'm not following.
I think it would act just like, you know, as far as November, you've got people that are on and then they shift. You know, like you might have one, a, Mrs. Roberts is on it on deck. And October, November rolls around, we choose someone new. That new person switches and you just take over for the remainder of the.
So do we want to do this in October? Make the changes in October?
I was just throwing a, you know, a month out there. But what she was saying is starting it with our school year so that we would be on, you know, in August. Every August, we would be approving new ones.
So do you want to bring something in August and make changes? I'm trying to get to a month where you want to make changes. Do you want to make them in August?
Yeah, I'm fine. I mean, we had the, we already had the workshop about it. I'm fine doing that, talking about.
So what we need to give to Diane is what committees need to change in August? Do all of them need to change in August or just some of them? That's the part that is a mystery to me. Madam?
Go ahead. I thought that it was coming back to us with a listing of which committees, for instance, say the calendar committee, that we might be eliminating as a committee and which committees would naturally fall. I mean, so take the Arts Council Committee. As to knowing whether we are statutorily required to have the committee? Does this ring a bell with anyone? Whether we're statutorily required to have it? And if we have it, is it in their bylaws? Is it in our piece? And what their year is and how their year falls? So that we would then, that's what I thought we were waiting to get back. Does that, anybody remember that?
Mrs. Falls has been working on that pretty extensively. And she's close to being done. But, but she has gone through, every committee that we have in the district has looked up policy or whether it's in the, wherever it's at. And we will be able to present that forward to you so that you could give direction on which ones you no longer need to have exist and which ones you need to fill.
And maybe we could have that at the September workshop, do you think? Or, or October?
Is it going to be another workshop? Or, well, we have to deal with the policy piece.
That's what she just said. We'll have to advertise the policies after the changes are made. So it's just the pleasure of the board as to which, which meeting or which workshop you want.
Well, the sooner the better, obviously. This is pressing. So we'll do it at the September workshop. But in the meantime, do we have to make changes to existing members and where they need to go? I think it's two separate items. I think we have the statutory piece, what, what can be eliminated? And then we have the piece of, are we changing the guard to follow the calendar of each of those committees for the year? So.
So obviously, the, the ones that are in our policy will take
Rescind.
Three months to change. Which, you know, I, so we've been talking about this for a while. So now we wouldn't be starting a new cycle until next August? So we would be changing in November and then changing again in August? Or, so then it would be?
There's always the, what I call, the, the time of discomfort where we're, we're, we're switching over and doing something new. So it could be bumpy for the next couple of months. But if we want to get it done and we want to put our foot down and say, let's just do this, let's try to embrace the discomfort and get people what they want, where they want in a way that everyone is comfortable with in the discomfort. And make sure that we're eliminating committees, et cetera, that aren't necessary and focus on the ones that are necessary. So I have no problem doing a September workshop and then in September's regular meeting, making those changes that we have to amend. The policy that needs to change will be for the committees that we no longer are going to have, correct? So we can, we can put a, put a stopgap in until those committees are phased out. But in the meantime, get people on the committees for this next year as soon as possible. So I think we could do it by September, October. think we could do it by September, October. Does that, is that too challenging? Or am I making?
I mean, I don't think that's aggressive at all, I was thinking like August.
Well, we're in August, so we could.
I mean, I was thinking that the next meeting.
We could, at the next meeting, identify the committees that need to be changed, that are mandatory. The August meeting will have, on the regular agenda, the discussion about changing people to the calendar year. Then we'll tackle, over the course of the next few months, and it's, there'll be a change of the policies that guide us now for committees that we may not want to. But let's, if you could bring to the, to that meeting, all the committees that are a must, that's what we'll focus on first, if that's okay.
That are not in policy.
That are, yes, yes, that are, that are, I'll call it mandated, for lack of a better word. We'll have that, we'll take care of that, and then we'll work on the ones that we might be phasing out. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
So, would we be looking for a first read in, in advertising approval in September, then? You have enough time to advertise for that, right? September for the advertising approval, and then October for a final approval? Is that what you would be doing?
For the ones that are.
In policy now.
In policy that we.
Are getting rid of.
Are getting rid of.
Yeah.
But the ones that are, like, the statutorily required ones, then that's in statute, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, I'd like to take a short recess before we go into our TRIM meeting. Thank you.
The public hearing is now in session. Mr. Main, are there any written responses to the advertised public hearing to be read at this time?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
At this time, I will turn it over to Carter Morrison to conduct a discussion of the millage and rollback rates.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Superintendent, those of us in attendance this afternoon, and those who may be watching us over the Internet. At your places, board members, you should have a copy of the tentative budget book, as well as the presentation for this afternoon's proceedings pursuant to Dr. Main's response. The budget and the tentative millage rates were placed in the newspaper according to the specifications of law, so we do have that, and we'll be turning that, those into the Department of Revenue. As we like to do, we always like to compare the proposed millage rate in comparison to the adopted millage rate for the prior year, and the proposed millage rate for 2526 is 5.720 mils in comparison to 5.75 mils in the prior year. The millage is about a quarter percent lower than the adopted millage rate in 2425. This year, in 2526, our proposed millage rate is 5.7270 mils, which comprises of the required local effort discretionary operating, the additional voted millage at .425, and the capital outlay millage. The 2526 millage rate is about 9% higher than the rollback rate. At this time, I just want to point out a quick Scrivener's error in the resolution that we've been asked to approve. There was an error on there that says 2.41%, but it is actually about 9%. We always, always like to look at a potential scenario on a residential home, scenario one, where there is no increase in the assessed valuation of about $378,000. In 2425, taxes would be about $2,006.60 compared to the current year, taxes of 1998.57, or there would be a tax decrease of $8.03, $8.03, or .40 less. Again, the millage rate is year-to-year. When you look at comparison, it's about a quarter percent lower. However, we assume a 3% increase in the assessed valuation. As everyone is aware, there's a constitutional amendment for Save Our Homes which caps the increase at 3%. So therefore, the 2425 taxes, as we mentioned, is $2,006.60. 2526 taxes would be $2,063.69, or $57.09. That is due to, we are seeing property values on the average in the FEFP in particular going up by 10.86%, however, the taxes are only levied at the 3% level because of the cap. At this time, Madam Chair, we'd like to sound the halls for any public input on the proposed 2526 tentative millage rates. I believe you may have someone here to speak.
Do we have?
No, okay.
Public comment?
I know you put me on the spot. I did not expect to be the only one here. Obviously, I read the paper maybe better than anybody else, but anyway, I'm just concerned about the taxes. And I noticed my school portion of my taxes are like in the 36%. We didn't educate our kids here. We, and we've had the same property for 50 years, in the, in the same family, but maybe different names. But anyway, I'm just expressing that I like to keep the taxes as low as I can, maybe the millage as low as I can. I don't know what you can do about it, but it just seems like something should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Main, have you documented that this public hearing was properly advertised in accordance with state law?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Are there any written responses to the advertised public hearing to be read at this time?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
The public is now invited to address, which I think they've already done.
Done, yeah.
So we're a little out of order, but that is okay. The Chair concludes that this public hearing on August 5th has been conducted pursuant to notice, and that ample opportunity to address these issues have been provided to all. Board members, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2026-01 Tentative Millage Rates?
Motion to approve.
So Carter, we're not approving the millage rate right now. We're just approving up to, we're not, we're gonna talk about the rollback rate, right? Like, we're not approving the rate that gives us a $15 million increase.
You, you are in essence approving the rates that will be mailed out on the tax bills come next month by the property appraiser, and the rates that you will be approving tonight will set the cap based on what was advertised.
It sets the cap, but it's not, we can go lower, we can't go higher.
Yes, you can go lower, but you cannot go higher based on what was advertised, yes.
Because I want to talk about, I do want to talk about
Please.
the rollback rate, and because we did see such a significant increase in property values that even though if we maintain at this current rate that we're charging, everyone is still gonna get a tax increase. So I, and I don't know with declining enrollment, if that's even something that we, we as a group need to, we need to talk about that, because our, while our enrollment is going down, we are asking our taxpayers to give us another $15 million, almost $16 million because of increase in property values. And then, and the next, we're attending and participating as community leaders on why our children can't come back here and afford to own a home. So I, I think that we should consider a rollback rate.
Madam Chair, if I may, just a moment, just to, it is at your discretion, but I just wanted to remind the board that the components of the millage rate, such as the required local effort, that is required by law, that you have to levy that based on the FEFP formula. That is statutorily driven.
Right.
The discretionary operating millage of .748 is, is an assumption that the board will levy that full amount to fund the FEFP formula to the maximum that the state has allocated those funds in the General Appropriations Act. The additional voted millage at .425, we're keeping that same millage rate, the millage rate the same as it was in the prior year, so we could fund those priorities that we've identified in the pro forma financials that we brought forward at the budget workshops. And finally, the capital outlay millage is worded in such a way that it's up to the 1.5 mils, so you do have some discretion there.
So, I'm going to try to summarize that two of the components of this are not in our control, and two of them are.
Yes, the required local effort is, for better or for worse, required. The discretionary operating is a significant proportion of the FEFP formula. The additional voted millage of .425, we're keeping the same as it was in the prior year. And the capital millage, we're obviously keeping the same based on the needs to renovate our, our infrastructure, et cetera, and that's contained within the five-year plan.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Morrison, could you please give us information? So we know that, based on the second calculation, our traditional and charter schools have an unweighted FTE of about $17,497, or 460, depending on whether I'm using your estimated numbers, or whether I'm using the state numbers, but I'll use the state numbers, $17,497. So at $17,497, with the, with all the pieces added to it, including the class size reduction, including the discretionary piece, including all of that, the state formula for the funding for that, the total funding for that $17,497 is $171 million. Can you give me last year's, so you should be able to figure a
Yes.
dollar amount per unweighted FTE, and then you should be able to give me a dollar amount for unweighted FTE last year.
So the information that I have, based on the third FEFP calculation, which is the October count, because we have not received a February count, is $168,560,659. This year is $171,795,250. That's $250. That's just the local portion, the whole together, state, state and local together.
Correct. So that's everything that does not include what's going, what, that's, that's our total bucket of money to fund $17,497. The $171 million is to fund the $17,497.
Traditional plus charters, yes.
Right.
Because they have taken out, out of the formula, the deduction for the FES, yes.
So the $168,560,659 was to fund how many students?
At the time, it was $19,841.84.
Unweighted?
Unweighted.
And then, that number includes the Florida empowerment number of 2231.
2231.75.
So if I subtract the 2231 from that, it means that 17,610 students were funded at, with a price of $168,560,659, which is how much per stu-, can you do the math for that?
Sure. It was 17,000
611.
841, 7611, 7.
17611.
160.
611.
Oops, excuse me. That's about 9,571.32 per, per unweighted FTE.
Okay, and if you do the same math on the 171,795,250, with the 17,497, the state's projections?
17,497, by denominator?
Uh huh.
That's 9818.55.
Okay, so, the, the actual increase per student is the difference between the 9818.55 and the 9571.32, which is $247.23, correct?
Yes.
And then if I take the number of students, I take the difference in the number of students, 17,611 minus the 17,497, right? That's 114 students.
Correct.
So, for us, so instead of, instead, I don't want to call it rollback, because rollback means something different, but if we funded at the same rate we did last year, if we funded at the same $9,571.32 per student, and if I used that number, 9571.32 times this year's number of students, 17,497.
I get 167,469,384. 384.
380.
386, excuse me.
386.
386.
So theoretically, for us to spend the same amount per student as we did last year means that we would reduce these taxes by $4,300, or 4,300, 4 million, 4 million, 300,000. The difference between those two numbers, the 171 and the 167 million, right? It's about $4 million.
Just double check that.
Okay. Okay. And if we did that, I think there's two components. So first of all, I'm interested in what the millage rate would be if we reduced the millage rate so that we funded at the same dollar per student rate as we did last year, but also knowing that I have to pull the charter students out of that, because the charter students are entitled to their pieces at the rate that was posted, correct?
Yes.
So the charter students, so, so my explanation is that even though we're saying, the state has computed us at 17,497 students for a price tag of 171 million. So I need to take the 1,600 charter students out of that number, about, let's call it 10%, and 10% I have to fund at that higher rate, but 10% I could fund at a $4 million less rate in order for us to be living on the same per-student budget that we lived on last year. And I think, and I would be interested in knowing what that number is, I think it's fair to explain to the person who spoke earlier that these rates are given to us by Tallahassee, and we, and the rate is computed, and they have figured in their calculation that their total piece would be 171 million to take care of 17,497 students. But that is a higher number than what it was last year. But, so you, you, even though you may see some relief off of us saving $4 million, because I think the total that we're supposed to be charging this year is 155 million, if I'm correct.
Yes, 155,064.
So 155 million, so you're at about, less than, it would be a less than 3% reduction would be what it would come out to be. So whatever your taxes are, if you just figured, you would have a 3% reduction, so your, your taxes may still look higher, but the reason they're still looking higher is because we have to do what the state number comes out to in those pieces. But I would be interested in knowing what that number is and what that millage piece looks like. Thank you.
So do we? Well, it wouldn't, wouldn't be higher if we used the rollback rate. It would be the same as it was last year.
If we use the rollback rate, though, the problem of using the rollback rate is that using the rollback rate doesn't fund us, I, I don't think the rollback rate saves us just $4 million. I think it saves us a higher number than $4 million, because our portion of the equation this year is 155. Last year, it was not 155. Last year, it was a lesser number than 155.
Right.
So our piece, so imagine if last year our piece was 140 million, and this year it's 155, it means our piece went up by 10%.
Well, our property values went up by like 14%,
Right.
I think on average.
Right. But, but overall, in the state, different districts are, are taking it, the state is pushing that piece back through, so even if we went to the rollback rate of the 140, for example, we can't do the 15 million, because then we would be paying money back to the state.
Well, we wouldn't, so what is the, I guess, you're right, what, because we are at whatever it is, 105%?
Yeah, but so that, so take the 15 million, so the state piece of what they're giving us for the class size reduction and the discretionary is about 17 million, right? If we take that 17 million and we try to push a rollback and say, we're not gonna collect 15 million, the 17 million that we get for those pieces would disappear, and the 17 million disappearing, reducing the 17 million by 15 million, but to get us to the rollback rate, would get us down to $2 million that we're picking up from the state. So we would be funding everything except for $2 million of it, which per student puts us at less dollars per student for rollback, because the portion that's coming, that, that we're contributing to the pot to pay for our own students is a higher percentage this year than it was last year. Does that make? But I'm, I'm willing to see what it looks like, if we know that the number last year was 9,571, I'm interested in knowing what that looks like to keep us capped at the 9,571. If we educated charter and traditional students at 9,571, what would it look like? What is the millage rate savings if we save that, if we stay at that rate instead of making that rate go up? But in doing that, we also have to peel back and set aside the 10% that's the charter students, because they have to be paid at the higher rate, as required by law. But I am interested to see what that looks like. But just going to rollback doesn't get us to
Doesn't solve the problem.
Doesn't solve the problem, because that would push us, if you figure 4 million gets us to here, saves us 247, it would be three times that, so it would be, mean that we have about $800 less per student than what we have this year. If we went to rollback, the amount per student doesn't stay the same, it would be reduced by about $800.
What was our student count, our projected?
17,497 for next year.
17,497. Unweighted.
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 And 171,795,250 for the total.
It's just, when, when you take our entire tentative budget of 598,662 for 2526, and you divide it by the number of students that we have, it's like $34,215 per student. I mean, that's
Right, and, and I'm thinking, so in addition to this, I'm thinking that at the same time, the piece that we might be, sorry, Mark, but the piece that we might be able to save some on is the capital piece. Sorry, Mark? Because that, that is a true piece that gets pushed through, you know? I mean, that's a true percentage of what our property values are, and that number just grows. So if we grew by 20%, that number just grew by 20%. So if, so even if we went to rollback, I'm curious to what a capital budget would look like if we went to rollback on the capital piece, like even if we didn't do it here, didn't do it on the operating piece, if we pushed it through on the capital piece, what that looks like.
It's gonna be a really complicated motion.
Yes. But if Carter can get us the information on what the millage, I guess it would be the .748, we would save the 4,325,000 on, that's the piece that we would adjust?
The .748, if you went to rollback
No, not thinking if we went to rollback. .748 generates how much money?
Oh, the .748 generates around $31,820,000. Going to rollback, oh, sorry, okay.
Not going to rollback, because you can't do it from going to rollback. If I wanted to make, if I do the ratio of the 31 million, 31,820,000
Right.
to the 4,300,000, I would know how much I need to save, how much I need to peel off of my rollback, off of my .748 number.
I just think we're gonna have to
You would not
We have to look at this holistically, because we have to consider our entire budget of what it costs to educate one child, and that at 34,000, over $34,000, that is crazy.
Yeah, but so, but you, but in looking at it that way, you still have to look at it from the operating piece and from the capital piece, and I think
Oh, absolutely.
And I think the easier place to make that adjustment is on the capital end.
If you were at 100%, you would raise on the capital $63.8 million. You were to go to rollback rate, which I know you're not, you would drop to $58.3 million, which is about $5.5 million, give or take.
Okay.
So
So if, if the superintendent can look at the capital budget and see what that, the difference between 63.8 million and 58.3, if we can save that off of the capital budget, that pushes the capital budget back to rollback, and then if Carter can figure out what that looks like to save the 4,325,000, what the .748 needs to be? If I know .748 raises me $31,820,000, and I want to raise $4,300,000 less, what is my .748 need to be?
I'm just thinking that the points, keep in mind that the FEFP has the .748 in it as a portion that is funding your wa-, your weighted students. In order not to run afoul of, potentially running afoul of anything in the FEFP formula, capital, I agree with you that the capital might be the place to make that adjustment to save that 4 million as opposed to operating side. Just my recommendation on that. So if you're looking to save 4.3 million on the capital I have to take some time to crunch the numbers for you, board members.
I'm really looking at saving 5.5 on the capital side.
Yeah, you would. If you went to rollback rate, you would save 5.5, no question.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Oh, don't be. So, tell me, esteemed board, are we making a motion here, or are we waiting for additional?
Oh, no, I think we're making the motion.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to ask, board members, is there a motion to approve the Resolution 2026.01 Tentative Millage Rates with several components to it?
Ms. Russell made a motion.
Okay, so
But not specific to
Okay, so, so would, would you like, do we withdraw and amend, or do you make a motion with an amendment?
I don't think you need to, because we can always come down.
Yes.
Yes.
If you make this motion and we approve this, we can always come down from here.
Yeah.
We can adjust the budget from here.
Yes.
Yes.
We can't go up.
We can't go up, we can go down.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Ms., okay.
I'll second that motion.
So, Ms. Russell made the motion, Dr. Murray already seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
But, Madam Chair, just for clarity, the board has approved the tentative rates which are just tentative
Correct.
which sets the cap. On final, when we come back in September, we can lower the rates to make sure we, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carter. So now we are
So the, just so the public knows, this is the worst-case scenario that you'll see advertised, not the, not the one that will be hopefully adopted in September.
Okay.
Okay. So now we are moving to, I lost my place here. We are, public hearing, proposed budget, 5.01, discussion of the 2025-26 proposed budget. The public is now invited to address the board regarding the proposed tentative budget 2526 at this time. Is there any individual or organization, or anyone with a personal public interest who wishes to speak? Okay. Being none? Carter, are you?
Yes, Madam Chair. The, before you on the screen is the, and Resolution 2026-02, to adopt the tentative, 2526 tentative budget at $598,662,312, a reduction in the general operating fund of about $4 million. What we were seeing there also was the decrease in the projection for unweighted FTE in the schools, as well as adjustments that the superintendent and his team and our team have made to reduce our budget. The debt service fund is essentially the same, just the The debt service fund is essentially the same, just the point of information that in October of this year will be our final payment on the 2021 A-COP that funded Jensen Beach Elementary and Palm City Elementary. We will be paying that off this year. Capital projects, there's a, coming in at 298,340,000, $445,000, an increase of 31,805,018, which is primarily due to a fixed capital rate, which you guys have discussed, levied against a increasing tax value of 10.86% increase. The food service budget comes in at 17,688,227, a reduction of 2.5 million. They have been strategically trying to lower their fund balance in the food service fund to meet certain federal requirements. Federal funds coming at 10,605,504, or a reduction of 7.9 million. That is primarily due to the expiration of the ARP dollars in the prior year. In addition, when the tentative budget was prepared, there were funds that were frozen by the Office of Management and Budget in Washington, DC, so those funds were taken out of the budget, out of the tentative budget. Since that time, those funds have been unfrozen, so when we come back for final, those funds will be restored in the final budget. And in the final enterprise fund, of 2.9 million, a reduction of 1.9 million for a total of 598,662,312, $592,000.
Can I ask a question? Carter, one more time, just about the capital projects, why that went up over 32, almost 32 million? Can you just explain that just really clearly?
Sure. The capital budget, as I mentioned, essentially, when you look at the math, the numerator is increasing, the denominator is the same. So your 1.5 is levied, maximum of 1.5 mils is levied against that tax value. So as that tax value is increasing, you have a fixed number, so you will be raising more revenues. It also is also a function of whether or not you're spending the funds in, from the prior year that are rolling forward into the budget, or what you're projected to spend. So, for example, we know we have some major projects coming onboard for 2526, the primary one being the rebuild of Murray Middle School, and those funds pretty much should be exhausted based on our five-year capital plan projection for next year.
So, this public hearing on August 5, 2025 has been conducted pursuant to notice, and that ample opportunity to address these issues have been provided to all. Board members, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2026-02, tentative budget? Second?
A motion by Ms. Roberts, second by Ms. Russell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, I believe that ends this meeting. Do we have any public comment? No?
No more? You don't want to come up again?
Maybe someone can...
Come up to the dais, please, and please tell us who you are.
My name is Margaret Rhodes. I'm sorry. If student enrollment is down and our property values are going up, and with all the building we have, why are our taxes not going down? That's what I want to know.
Carter?
Can you explain?
Thank you.
Oh, he's going to get me. Am I, is my assumption right? Student enrollment is down, property values are up?
The cost, the cost of things continues to rise, and as you can hear from the presentation, the state's numbers have risen as well, so we are bounded by them.
I understand, I understand that. That was explained to me, because I thought this all stayed in Martin County, it doesn't. The state requires to fund other schools. I understand that, but...
Correct. But we are trying to mitigate this as best as we can without harming the education of the students, so we have to be very, very careful, but we are definitely sympathetic, because we're all homeowners here, and we all understand how you're feeling, and I appreciate your comments. And Carter will, will educate you, I promise.
Well, I didn't, I thought there'd be more people here, obviously, I don't know.
They might be for the, for the actual adoption. It's right now, it's tentative, and we're still working the numbers.
That's what I, that's what I thought they should be input, if you're inputting the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Ms. Roberts?
I just wanted to clarify that we are not sending money to Tallahassee or to other school districts.
Right.
So there is a pot of money to educate our students here. We get, we have some locally, and we get some from Tallahassee. The amount that we get from Tallahassee is dependent on how much we raise here.
We also send money, correct?
We do not send money.
No.
We don't send any money. So every penny of tax that's charged in Martin County stays in Martin County. It just means that in the overall formula, the amount that's coming from the state is not as much as it was the prior year. So when our property values go up and we're able to charge more in Martin County and collect a larger amount in Martin County, then what happens is the state sends us less money. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, so the, and the counties that are in more impoverished areas are obviously getting more money from Tallahassee and are collecting less in taxes.
Yes. Thank you for coming. Have a good night. Okay, open to the board. Hmm? We did. Okay, so seeing no extra comments, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.